All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, December ninth, regular meeting of Kimberly City Council, which I would like to call to order, held here on the homeland so that to know how peoples. Welcome, everybody. Just before going to the call for agenda, Council McDane is away this evening. He's out east visiting family and councillor Cairns has been delayed. She will be here tonight, but is is going to be a little bit late. All right, Maurice, do we have any late items this evening?
We have no late item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, hearing none, could I have a mover to adopt the agenda? Councillor Fox moves, councillor Robert seconds, all those in favor. That motion is carried. Next up, we have the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting held on November the twenty fifth. Move her please, councillor McGuire, thank you, and councillor Robert seconds, all those in favor. That motion is carried. All right, the formalities are done. We do have a delegation this evening. Jada Bassey from City Spaces is here to present the interim housing needs report that we've been talking about for a little while. We've been looking forward to this. Jada, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm going to share my screen and we will go from there. I'll make this a bit larger. Okay, so yeah, good evening, Mayor and council. I'm pleased to present to you the interim housing needs report for the city of Kimberly. My name is Jacob Bassey and I'm principal with City Spaces Consulting. I would like to first acknowledge my colleague Louis Wong, who is also on the call today. He did a lot of the heavy lifting on the data collection and analysis. I also want to acknowledge city staff, particularly Troy and Aaron, who were very helpful and responsive with providing information and context to this work. So thank you so much for for that collaboration. So what I'm going to do tonight is walk through an overview of why this work was undertaken, provide a brief overview of the methodology, dive into key findings, highlight next steps, and then answer any questions that you might have. So starting off with the legislative requirements. So some of you on on council may be familiar with the province introducing sweeping changes to legislation related to residential development and housing. And this really started back in 2019. And this was the first time when local governments were required to undertake housing needs reports and housing needs assessments. And this was mandated by the province. And so in 2019, it was the first time every local government had to undertake this type of assessment. And the province did provide an outline of the different data to be collected and analyzed. However, at that time, they didn't provide any guidance or methodology on how to produce housing unit need estimates. So as a result, there was inconsistency with the housing needs reports that were being produced by every local government across the province. And this made it challenging for the province. I think what they were trying to do is find a way to compare the outcomes from those needs or needs assessment reports to help them with their decision making in terms of investment into things like affordable housing. So that was an early requirement and early days in terms of how how things were gone about. And that takes us to the legislative amendments two point O that have been recently introduced. And there was broad ranging changes even to things such as short term rental. But at this time, what the province did is took the requirement for housing needs reports one step further and requiring every local government to calculate estimated housing needs, housing unit needs for five years and twenty year horizon. And they prescribed what's called the H and R method, the housing needs report method. So the province came up with a prescribed methodology that every single local government had to apply to their community to come up with these housing unit need estimates. And as a result, they're going to be able to compare Kimberly to many different communities and regions across across the province. And there's consistency in that in that approach. In addition to to this requirement, they're also looking for every local government to update the official community plan in the coming year in 2025. And what they're looking for is to ensure that there's enough residentially designated land to accommodate the housing unit need estimates that are being calculated as part of this interim housing report. So the first deadline and requirement is completing this interim housing needs report by January first, 2025. So that's just around the corner. And the next step, the next window is next year, amend the official community plan to ensure there's enough residentially designated land to accommodate those housing unit need estimates. So the H and R method, the methodology prescribed by the province, has six components, A through F. And every local government is working through this component system. Component A is looking at extreme core housing need, looking at number of persons experiencing homelessness, suppress household formation, anticipate household growth, looking at rental vacancy, and another factor called the demand buffer. So it's not just looking at projections on how much a community is growing. It's also looking at what we're calling unmet need. So looking at who is living in Kimberly today and if they have the housing that's affordable and suitable and available to meet their needs today. So looking at that as a component. And then there's that future demand, looking at things like population growth, like migration patterns, and estimating the number of housing units that are needed to meet that population group. The interesting, unique one is this component F, demand buffer. Basically, the province has identified this factor uniquely for every community. And it's supposed to provide some slack in the housing system, a bit of flexibility or wiggle room. So we do those calculations and then you have this additional buffer just to help with that flexibility in the system. So in terms of these interim report requirements, there's a five and twenty year housing unit need estimate. In addition to that, the province is expecting at this point in time to have two specific statements. One, a statement about housing in proximity to alternative transportation infrastructure. And the second is a step statement on actions already taken by local government to reduce housing needs. So these are just the the three expectations of what is in an interim report. So it's not a full comprehensive housing needs report. If you can remember, the the city of Kimberly had already undertaken a housing needs report not that long ago. And in my opinion, that needs report is still relevant today. That included qualitative research engagement, research on the economy and different contextual factors. So that's still very important today. So this is really, I think, like an addendum to that exercise. It's a calculation. In the number of years coming from from today, the expectation is the low every local government will have to do a comprehensive housing needs report update, which will include these components, but also that qualitative component as well. So now going into the results for the city of Kimberly, looking at all those different components, A through F. So if you remember those requirements, looking at that five year horizon, the estimate for the city of Kimberly is 544 housing units in five years. That averages to about 109 units per year. If we look at that twenty year horizon, the estimate is 1,706 units, so that's 20 years. In addition, we have provided an additional horizon, a ten year horizon. This is supplemental, it's not required, but we find it is helpful from a planning point of view when you're looking at writing policy and land use. You do have, I'd say, more influence over that ten year horizon. So we've included that for information and the estimate there is 952 units. Okay, this next table, there's a lot of information and I'm going to walk through it as best I can. This is showing us the ten year estimate of future demand of the number of units we need for persons per household and by income groups from very low income to moderate average and above and above average. So we'll start off in that far left column. There's these white boxes, one, two, three, and four person households. If we look across horizontally to the total, we can see that the city of Kimberly in ten years from now needs ninety three units suitable for one person's households, fifty five units for two persons, fifteen units suitable for three person households, and sixteen units for four or more people. We can see if we take a step back that we need a lot more units for smaller household size, one and two people per household and fewer for those larger households. So that really reflects the the family formation that we're seeing these these days as, you know, smaller, smaller households than we did in decades past. And we can also look at the income levels. So if we look at that light green column for low income households, we can see that we need fifty six units for low income households who are also one person households. So there's a lot of information here that is helpful from a planning purpose. And I will also maybe mention that this this estimate for persons per household by income level, this is not a requirement for the province, but we have done additional supplemental research and analysis to help with your internal planning processes. The next table here looks a bit similar, giving us different information, this time related to the number of bedrooms. So we look at in the left column, we have one, two, three, and four or more bedroom bedrooms. And across the income color columns, we have there as well. So altogether, in ten years, the estimate is the city of Kimberly needs 519 one bedroom units, 163 two bedroom units, 110 three bedroom units, and 25 units that have four or more bedrooms. And again, we can glean additional information of the number of bedrooms we need by income group. So for example, if we go to that middle column there for moderate income households, we can see we need 20 units that are large enough for two bedrooms and that are affordable to moderate income households. Going back to summarize the required content, the city of Kimberly is required to have the five year estimate of 508 units in five years and 1,547 units in the twenty year horizon. I should emphasize that these are in no way a target. These are housing unit need estimates. So in terms of the expectation of the city of Kimberly, the expectation here is to ensure you have enough residentially designated land in your OCP and also have supporting tools like your regulatory tools, your zoning by law, to create the enabling conditions for housing development to unfold in this way. But you're not required to meet those as a target. You're required to make sure that you have enough designated land to accommodate this type of estimate. So for that other required content, we have here a statement on alternative transportation. And this includes having active transportation network that outlines housing infrastructure in close proximity to existing and planned residential development. I think one of the takeaways here is that the province is really looking for larger urban centers to encourage transit oriented development. So it's less applicable to the Kimberly context. But in any case, we ensure that we included information here relevant to what the province is expecting. In terms of actions that the local government has already taken, there's a lot of things that city of Kimberly has done proactively before these legislative changes were introduced. For example, the zoning bylaw was amended in 2022 to ensure more housing availability and affordability was provided. And there's been recent changes related to the small scale multi unit housing bylaw. In terms of next steps, the interim housing needs report needs to be received by Kimberly City Council. And the deadline to submit this interim housing needs report is January first, 2025. The next step is to amend the official community plan to ensure there's enough residentially designated land to accommodate the housing unit need estimates. And every local government has one year to complete this. So you have until December thirty first, 2025 to amend the OCP. And I will just summarize that this is, you know, pretty significant changes that every local government is experiencing. But the hope is that through all communities across the province, working towards ensuring there's there's more housing in communities that were able to meet the needs of of people. Because, you know, I've thrown a lot of numbers here and a lot of tables, but behind those numbers are our real people who need housing in in the community. So that concludes my presentation this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Pardon me, thanks very much, Jada. Great job of distilling this down into ten minutes. There was a huge amount of data sitting in that report, lots of which I'm sure there will be further questions coming as as we have an opportunity to digest it all. Council, questions or comments for Jada? Go ahead, councillor Roberts.
Thank you, Jada. Really, I really like the way you put these together. They're really acceptable to see which way things can go. I was just wondering, what levels of data were considered other than just potential income? Are we looking at the the town as a as a whole, being able to attract new business? Or what 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 were your basic determinants to make you fall into these age categories? Or is it just these are the age categories across the board in in British Columbia?
Yeah, this is good. This is a good question. So there were multiple data sources that provided input into this, including from B C stats. But related to age, actually, there is no age related required analysis as part of the housing needs assessment and housing unit need estimates. I actually think this is a bit of an oversight from the province because, you know, we don't have any information related to, say, the need for seniors oriented housing. We don't walk away with an understanding of the amount of independent, semi independent, supportive, you know, type of housing is is needed. So the age related requirements actually is is not included. And your comment related to things like the economy, that's also not factored in. Again, this is like a a technical mathematical exercise, exercise with these prescribed inputs from the province, things like number of persons experiencing homelessness, population projections, peer numbers of population projections, some migration patterns related to that. I mean, B C stats does consider to some degree. Oh, sorry, I think I had an interruption in my in my internet there. Hopefully you can hear hear me now. So so yeah, this is a very limited exercise. I would refer back to your previously completed housing needs report. That I feel has much more comprehensive context, including related to the economy that I think is still relevant today, that is not factored as part as part of this analysis. I hope that answers your question. Let me know if there's a follow up.
Yeah, that's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Councillor McGuire.
Yeah, just question around the usefulness of this data. And it just seems to me like having individual communities all doing individual housing needs reports as opposed to having the province kind of take all the data into account and look at the province wide numbers of what we need for housing and then distribute it based on different things happening within the communities. It just feels like a bit of a backwards way of doing it. And I'm just curious, you know, if if the province's intention is really to get a good sense of where the growth is needed within the the province, whether this is really an effective way of doing it, or if it might be better served to have them, you know, have a larger study of the entire province.
Well, I can't speak on behalf of the province. However, this is a bit of an experiment for them. They have now, they have not required this kind of studies for for local government. And they are open, I think, to feedback. In fact, we've been providing feedback to our contacts at at the ministry as we've been working through this data and and analysis. It's a very, it's a very good point. I think what would be helpful is the next time you are looking to do a housing needs report. Basically, what they're trying to do is have the housing needs report timed right before you update your OCP. And they would like, the province would like to see this done every five years as a duo. So first you start with your housing needs report, then you undertake an amendment or an update to your OCP. And they're trying to time it with the when they are issuing the latest census data. And so the next time you do your housing needs report, a more comprehensive process, they're again going to prescribe all their expectations. However, as a local government, if you have any unique situations, scenarios that you would like investigated further, you can add that component to your housing needs report. So long as you're meeting the minimum requirements of the province, you can also put your own stamp to what you think is most important. And so in that way, you do have some autonomy or some influence over the study that you think is relevant and and would be helpful for your staff, your community stakeholders and and council. And you can ideally also shape it to help be, help inform your OCP planning process again so that if there's any sort of customization, you know, special special research that you want integrated, you you have that, you have that autonomy to do it. But it is, it is a good observation that the province is, you know, sweeping this across all local governments. And there could be different ways to do it.
Further?
Yeah, just just further, yeah. My point is just, you know, as a small community like us, it's really hard to, you know, without having a provincial context, really guesstimate what kind of future needs our community is going to have without that larger provincial context. And that is more my point is when you add up all these reports from the entire province, that's not really going to give you a realistic picture of the needs within the province because, you know, the the propensity for error within an individual community is so great.
Right, thanks for those comments, councillor McGuire. So Jada, what were there any overarching or kind of fundamental assumptions that were made in the course of putting the report together?
Well, I think the overarching assumptions are grounded in in the methodology itself. So, you know, we assume that that the city of Kimberly is going to grow in alignment with B C stats projections. And, you know, the thing with the B C stats projections is that it's not considering things like, you know, recent changes to immigration policy at at the federal level. And, you know, we're not sure what that's going to, what that's going to be doing. So it's it's a very, it's a very rigid way of looking at it. And I'll give you maybe one, one example that hopefully is a little bit helpful. When we're doing this analysis and we have those summary tables of the number of units you need for one person household, two person households, the number of units for for certain bedrooms, this is assuming, for example, that a two person, a couple only needs one bedroom. However, they might have a consumer preference for two bedrooms because maybe they want to work from home, or maybe they want a spare bedroom for, you know, exercise or relative visiting. So when, so one assumption that maybe you should be aware of is that this is to ensure the baseline, the basic needs of the community is met, which might not necessarily align with what the market is is driving. So you might have a developer, an applicant come to you and saying, hey, I want to be, I'm looking at a, you know, this kind of a mix. And ideally, you want that to, do you want to align what the development and builders are proposing compared to your housing needs report? However, they might be offering larger units or more bedrooms, something along those lines. And I think that flexibility is okay. This report is meeting the basic needs, but what the market is is offering might be slightly different.
All right, excellent. Also, so kind of again, at at the highest level, what what do you believe will be the biggest factor, factors or the biggest influence in us being able to achieve the goals that are being set out?
I think it comes to your next step of a creative process of an OCP amendment update. So, I mean, this technical exercise, it's your baseline information. There is, there's not, you know, levers to to change and adjust it. When you go to your next, your next stage of an OCP update, OCP amendment, this is where you can start looking at different scenarios. This is where you can start considering, well, how how do we want to envision the different housing typologies built form to meet the needs? For example, you can build two bedroom units in stacked townhouses and multi units at secondary suites. So the creative exercise is your next step is is what is the appropriate scale, character, context for Kimberly to achieve those units? And and there's different ways that you can outline an OCP amendment process, but you can look at, you know, low, low, moderate, high growth scenarios. You can look at different types of densities and how you want to allocate that in your community, which makes sense with existing infrastructure, all kinds of things. So so I think in terms of successfully implementing this is ensuring you have enough residentially designated land, but also that it makes it makes sense for for your context for the built form that you think would, you know, be be achievable from your developer builder's perspective, but also what your community is interested and and their appetite for what they want to live in.
Excellent. Thanks for that, Jada.
You're welcome.
Councillor Cairns.
So my apologies for being late, first of all, and.
You gave us the heads up, which we appreciate.
And thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate it. And I just, and it might have actually come up during the presentation as well, but the the report doesn't, you know, doesn't really account for the spike in housing prices, rental rates and inflation. So the projections of housing needs for lower income groups is likely to be very significantly underestimated. Would you say that's the case there?
It that did stand out to me when when I looked at the number of units for for very low income. I think the number we had in a ten year is zero. And it goes up for for the for the low income. I mean, this is a a helpful reference. I think when you look for opportunities to build something like affordable housing, you know, there's going to be another community housing fund call from B C Housing, maybe maybe in the spring, spring of next year. Either use a local government and or nonprofit organizations. If there's a site, I mean, a lot of those applications are going to need to be site specific and ideally reference the numbers in the housing needs reports. The province is going to look for that connection between those types of funding applications and what's in that housing needs report because it is your business case because you need to demonstrate the need, you need to demonstrate that you're going to be able, that those units are indeed needed and you need to match that to something. But once you get to that site specific level, you start looking at, you know, your pro formas, your, you know, rent revenue, your your mix of low income to to moderate income. I think that's going to be on a site by site basis, case by case basis, partnerships and and that kind of, and that kind of thing. But there there is, there is identified for that low income. But the very low income, the the inputs didn't didn't demonstrate that.
Councillor Roberts.
Oh, thank, thank you. Jada, my my major worry is you could take the East Cootney, West Cootney, the Caribou, the North, and add those all together, and you still wouldn't have the kind of numbers that are relevant to the larger center in the lower mainland. And I would hope that if they're going to be doing other than just saying, okay, we need 7,000 houses, I would hope that they're kind of paying attention to the fact that the needs of the these areas are completely different than the needs of major metropolitan areas. And I I'm hoping that they're not just going to create one big ball of wax that is totally irrelevant to us after all is said and done.
Yeah, it'll be interesting what what the province does in terms of interpreting these results. But there is, there is, from my understanding, a perspective that there, there has been a lack of investment in housing in small rural communities. And it is a growing, a growing problem. But you're right, the province, what they're, what they're, what they're trying to do is look at where they're going to have the biggest impact for their investment. And they're they're trying to have a fair playing field of where that investment is going. And and I suspect that they are going to be referencing, you know, these needs reports to to help inform, inform those those decisions. So whenever there is an application for an affordable housing project, there needs to be, you know, a solid business case and and referencing the needs assessment. And so I think there is still a compelling case to be made for for housing in places like like Kimberly, so long as you you tie it to what you've demonstrated. so long as you you tie it to um what you've demonstrated. But there's, you know, there's, there is a going to be a need for low income, for for moderate income household, for rental housing. Um, so there there is a case case to be made. And I mean, I'm starting to to um sidestep from from this scope of work, but they are also just looking for um uh business cases of where their their money is going to go fairly far. For example, increasing expectation of local governments um providing uh resources, waiving of fees, off- offering um municipally owned land, you know, land lease agreements, partnerships, things like that. Anything you can, you know, uh stack into into some sort of application makes it more attractive for for their consid- consideration. So I'll just add that in there as a as a side suggestion.
So that's not all that dissimilar from C M H C and kind of the requirements that are around, you know, getting uh guarantees through C M H C.
Indeed, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, last call, counsel. This is the beginning uh of uh what will be an awesome process. Thanks uh for uh giving us the uh the prime version, Jada. We'll look forward to chatting again.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, um, first up tonight is the zoning amendment uh twenty seven seventy nine. Um, and let's put the first motion on the floor, and that is that counsel provide first reading to bylaw twenty seven seventy nine. Um, could I have a mover, please? Uh, Counselor Maguire moves and Counselor Karen seconds. Discussion. Go ahead, Troy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor McCormick. Um, yeah, just in terms of a brief overview of what's being proposed here. Um, um, in terms of some background as well, uh, some of counsel will have been involved in the uh original approvals for zoning amendments on the site and the original development permit approval for the Central and Watkins Development uh formerly known, the address formerly known as forty nine Deer Park. That's been changed to seventy Boundary Street. Um, it's a multi unit mixed use development, um primarily residential units, but also some commercial units on the main floor of buildings proposed on Deer Park Avenue. Um, this uh what's being proposed here is a fairly minor amendment to the text of the R three A zone uh that uh deals with the minimum separation requirement uh between buildings. Um, just as uh development is progressing on site. Um, I think everyone's familiar there. The 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 first two buildings are are well underway. One of those is is also completed and occupied now. Um, and we're uh uh have the building permit application for the for the next building on the site, which is going up along Boundary Street. And that's when we had identified that uh there was a bit of a issue there with the uh minimum separation requirement between buildings and has to do largely with the like the deck structures that are attached to the to the buildings. Uh, so this proposed amendment will uh take care of that by reducing that minimum separation requirement between buildings from five meters to three meters. Um, this um, there's a bit of a duplication duplication here with um uh some building code requirements, what's what's referred to as the uh uh limiting distance or the separation distance from uh from for building fire code reasons um that um there, you know, we'll always make sure that those are being complied with through the permitting process. And and this three meter uh minimum separation that's proposed here will uh will support compliance with that as well. Um, so we're recommending uh first three readings of that amendment tonight. Uh, and then that would come back uh likely to the next meeting, subject to uh approval from Ministry of Transportation. Um, also, just with this report, we're also just introducing that there's also a corresponding amendment to the development permit that's being proposed. Um, no decision on that tonight, but just as terms of background and context there. So fairly um uh minor overall change to the uh uh largely to the exterior finishes and 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 uh kind of exterior look appearance of the buildings. Um, just that then from what was originally approved of development permit. Uh, so simplified roof design, um little different look than what was it on the original permitting. Um, and that uh as the proponent explained, there's just reflects um responding to market conditions and costs and availability of materials there to uh help uh um help keep these units as affordable as possible. Um, so yeah, with that part, um if um it can't really be approved until the uh until the zoning changes is is approved, so that so what happened at the next meeting there, again, subject to Ministry of Transportation approval of the zoning change, um, we would have um uh final approval of both the zoning amendment and the D P amendment there.
All right. Thanks, Troy. Counsel. Counselor Maguire, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question about uh, so we're changing the building separation based on deck, decks that are protruding from the building. So my question is, um, if this zone were to be expanded to other properties within the city, would that mean that we could be building houses at three meters apart instead of the five meters apart in these future developments?
Uh, yeah, there's that potential uh and and even with within the site, if there's other changes proposed in the future. Um, but that would be actually fairly consistent with the minimum, the normal minimum distance, required distance between buildings. Um, most have a side yard of one and a half meter each, so combined three meter separation.
Yeah, sounds good.
Further? Yep. Counselor Roberts.
Uh, well, I'm just happy to see that the change is not concerned with the party department because I think that's one of the things of reasonable separation to the way they are in the first place. As well as the party firm feels like that this amendment is acceptable.
Yeah, cool. Uh, so just for clarification, if the decks weren't on, this wouldn't be coming forward, correct?
Yeah, if if there was uh.
There's this isn't about the buildings being, you know, too close or anything.
Yeah, at this point, it's 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 more the uh accessory structures that are attached. And because they're attached, they're they're accounted as as part as part of the principal structure.
Okay, thanks, Troy. Counselor Maguire.
Just a general comment on the development permit changes. Uh, I'm not clear on what the changes are. So just when those come forward and making sure that it's clear that we have a kind of a what it what it originally was, a picture of what it originally was, and then uh really highlighting that change so that it's easy to see.
Notice. Thank you.
Thanks, Troy. Um, further, counsel? All right, call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Um, next up, we have uh the motion for second reading. Um, mover please. Counselor Maguire, thank you. And Counselor Karen seconds. Um, comments, counsel? All those in favor? That motion is carried. And finally, uh move third reading. Counselor Fox, thank you. And Counselor Robert seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, counsel. Pardon me. Okay, next up, we have um several bylaws for adoption. First is the general zoning bylaw amendments, uh which is bylaw number twenty seven seventy three and bylaw twenty seven seventy four. And the motion on the floor is that counsel adopt bylaw twenty seven seventy three. Uh, first off, mover please. Counselor Fox, thank you. And Counselor Karen seconds. Uh, Troy, comments?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor McCormick. Uh, just real quick um confirmation there. As part of the report, we had outlined that um this we're recommending adoption, but uh at the time of the writing, we hadn't hadn't received confirmation from Ministry of Transportation of their approval, but we did receive that today. So the the path is clear for counsel to proceed on on both bylaws.
Good timing. That was a good assumption.
It's well planned.
Get it in the agenda. All right, call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. And finally, that counsel adopt bylaw twenty seven seventy four. Over please. Counselor Roberts, thank you. Counselor Karen seconds. All those in favor? That motion is carried. Next up, we have the general amendments to bylaw twenty six twenty. And the motion on the floor is for uh adoptions of uh twenty seven seventy five, amendment number two, two twenty six twenty. Counselor Roberts moves and Counselor Fox seconds. Comments, Troy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor McCormick. Uh, nothing further to add here unless there's any other questions from counsel?
Counselor Maguire.
Yeah, I I think I asked this last time, too. Just curious uh what our insurance policy had to say about this.
Um, we did not follow up with them specifically about that uh question. Um, so no, no further information on that.
Further? Anybody else? Um, can we um put just to put some closure on that? Can we, we'll continue with the uh the adoption, but if we could get a, get an answer back on that, it'd be awesome, Troy.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next up, we have bylaw twenty seven seventy six, which is the Kimberly sewer rates and regulations bylaw. And um this is also for adoption. Mover please. Counselor Roberts, thank you. Counselor Fox seconds. Any comments? Hearing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next up is the waterworks uh rates and regulations bylaw. Motion on the floor is that counsel adopt uh bylaw number twenty seven seventy seven. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Fox moves and Counselor Maguire seconds. Discussion. All those in favor? That motion is carried. And finally, that counsel adopt a bylaw twenty seven seventy eight, which is the five year uh twenty twenty four, twenty twenty eight, five year financial plan bylaw amendment. Um, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Karen's moves and Counselor Fox seconds. Any further discussion on those items? Go ahead, Counselor Maguire.
Yeah, it it just mentions a report, uh, a staff report dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and I couldn't find that um on the agenda from that meeting. So I I just like some uh recon from the admin department to maybe track down when that was approved and uh maybe forward it on now. So, yeah, I just couldn't find it in the agenda or the minutes.
Sure that. Thanks, Counselor Maguire. Further comment? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Roberts.
I would just like to note for the listening public that we have already put all of these motions through three readings. And tonight was the night we had the last chance in choosing to adopt them.
Yeah, good uh good point. Um, we're not trying to uh hasten uh things through without the proper discussion. We've had uh three previous readings and uh a fair amount of discussion on all of these items, for sure. Anybody who's has been tuning in uh to the council meetings via uh YouTube will have seen those. And uh this is simply the the adoption happening tonight. Uh, thank you uh for bringing that forward, Counselor Roberts. We need to remember that uh we have the public listening in and we can't make too many assumptions. All right, uh, next up, we have the interim housing needs report, uh which we have just received by presentation. And the motion on the floor is that counsel perceive the city of Kimberly twenty twenty four interim housing needs report dated November twenty fourth. Mover please. Counselor Maguire, thank you. And Counselor uh Karen seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're good. Okay, next up, we have the M O U uh regarding the Mark Creek watershed and the motion on the floor. Uh, there are actually two motions. The first one is that counsel approve entering into a new uh five year uh M O U uh renewal uh with City of Kimberly and B C Timber Sales. Uh, this M O U relates to the forestry activities and drinking water protection in the Mark Creek watershed. Mover please. Counselor Roberts, thank you. And Counselor Fox seconds. Discussion.
Yeah, I think thank you.
Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, Mayor McCormick.
Chair.
So uh, as as mentioned, this uh, the purpose of this report is for counsel's approval to uh renew this memorandum of understanding with uh B C Timber Sales. Uh, for us to work collaboratively collaboratively together uh in relation to the forestry and logging activities inside the Mark Creek watershed. So this is a longstanding M O U uh was initially uh put together in two thousand and two and has been renewed every five years since that point. Um, and like I said, it's it's it establishes the the relationship between the city of Kimberly and B C T S. Uh, making sure that we're managing all the all the activities uh inside that water, the watershed uh as to not adversely affect our drinking water quality. So a couple of just changes, highlights for for this year, uh the changes. There's there's kind of three, three changes that happened. First one is more of just updating the names to the current ministries uh and getting those correct. So that's the uh the representative representative list. Uh, second one is we've negotiated with B C Timber Sales to increase the amount of funding that they put towards the monitoring that happens in the watershed from uh ten thousand up to fifteen thousand annually. And then last one is an also an increase to the uh liability insurance requirement for any of the licensees that go logging in in the watershed, that uh we are now requiring a a ten million dollar minimum liability insurance uh up from five million previously. And I will welcome any questions there there may be on on the M O U.
Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counsel? Counselor Karens, go ahead.
Sure, thanks. And thanks, Nick. This is, it's nice to see the the renewal coming and um also the increase in the contribution towards um monitoring and also the insurance and um. Maybe that will assist with some stream flow monitoring equipment. And um, and I I'll just take the opportunity to mention that we um met, the watershed committee met in um October and toured the watershed and talked about treatment areas um with Canfor and Matthew Creek and B C T S started harvesting on Sullivan Hill in late October. And um, and Bob Gray is working with um E C T S and and licensees on uh guidance for treatments in the watershed to increase the the um resilience to to fire and protect our our water, drinking water supply. Um, and I'll I'll just mention, I understand that the broader modeling project on how that Bob Gray is is working with a group on is um, it's the broader modeling project really on how fire moves across the landscape and how best uh to protect key resources in light of that information. And I understand uh that outputs should be available in January and um available for presentation in March. So I just thought I'd take the opportunity to to mention that.
Thanks, Counselor Karens. Um, so fifteen K is what E C T S will put in. What's our share?
The remainder. So it's uh.
How how much is?
Yeah, up over the last five years, our average costs have been about thirty five to forty thousand dollars.
In total?
In total, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, awesome. Thanks. Counselor Maguire? Nope, okay. Counselor Roberts, go ahead.
Um, there was a a brief touch on a a conversation we had recently about entering into some kind of a memorandum regarding the Matthew Creek watershed, too. Has anybody been speaking further on that or is that to come?
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, great, great question, uh, Counselor Roberts. Um, so that is something that we're working towards in establishing uh integrated watershed management plan for Matthew Creek. So so the I W M P, this one is specifically for uh Mark Creek. It does have some touch points on Matthew Creek in there, but but that's something that the committee is working together to to initiate and uh really using the the current I W M P in in Mark Creek to establish a formal one for Matthew Creek. Um, we we don't have a timeline currently, but uh it's just in the beginning stages.
Thank you.
All right, call the question on the M O U. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. The second part is that counsel authorized the chief admin officer to execute the M O U on behalf of the city of Kimberly. Counselor Maguire moves and Counselor Karen seconds. All those in favor? That motion is carried. Okay, pardon me. Next up, we have another uh piece of housekeeping, and that is the rescinding of the emergency expender expenditures policy that dates back to June twenty sixth, two thousand. That wasn't a typo, was it, Maurice? Just asking, two thousand seems like a long time ago. Okay. Okay, it's been okay hidden for a while. Uh, it's good that we're changing that. So the motion on the floor is that counsel rescind the policy referenced uh as emergency. So the motion on the floor is that counsel rescind the policy referenced as emergency expenditures dated June 26th, 2000, as attached to the staff report. Counselor McGuire moves and Counselor Karen seconds. Brief explanation? Somebody speak to this?
I can speak to this.
Please.
So we're in the process of preparing some amendments to the emergency bylaw. And while I was going through some of the policies, I discovered that there was a policy dating back to 2000 that I'd never been receiving. So now the, the expenditure limits related to emergencies are part of the bylaw. They are not, they're not a policy. So it's just for making sure, housekeeping and making sure we're consistent. And there is no, there is no confusion on which document should be used.
Takes precedence.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Maurice. With that, call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next up, we have the City of Kimberly check run in the amount of $52,911.08 to be approved as paid. Counselor Roberts moves and Counselor Fox seconds. Holy cow, $53,000. Is that a type?
It should say something right on the top of it that says mail strike.
Oh, there you go.
These are checks that were actually created and were on the last list, but were chosen, they chose to pull them out and pay them in a different direction online. So
Okay, excellent.
They'll, they'll show up with later date on our online report.
Okay, excellent. Thanks for that, Counselor Roberts. Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. We have one piece of correspondence, informational item this evening, which is the Regional District of East Cootenay retrofit assist program. I got a mover seat. Counselor Roberts, thank you. Counselor Fox, seconds. Any comments? Go ahead, Counselor Karen's.
It's just really nice to see this, that this is available for residents in Kimberly to, to get assistance with accessing grants and contractors to do home energy retrofits. So it's a win-win. This is great.
Yep, awesome.
So thanks, yeah. It's, it'll, it'll be great if we're able to, to publicize it.
I think, I think the regional district has a, has a plan in place to kind of get it publicized near and far. Troy?
I can speak briefly on that. We have actually already added the information and the link to the regional district information on our website, so that's there if, if anyone happens to be looking for that. And they have provided us with some print materials to hand out at the front reception, and those are available there at the, at the front counter now already, so.
Thank you, Troy. Counselor McGuire?
Yeah, I think this is particularly relevant to the City of Kimberly because we have so many old minor type housing that could use some of these upgrades. So I'd like, really like to see the community make use of this.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. Further?
Just want to highlight, too, that we're the, that the, the regional district, because Cootenay, this whole area is the first time they've actually added the, the financing piece into the mix. So seems like with each iteration, as it goes through a different community, you know, we're coming on board at a, at a good time when it's going to maximize the benefit for people and it can help reduce operating costs of homes over the long term for people. So that can help with affordability as well. And just to follow up with just, it's on our website. Will it be going out on our Facebook as well?
I'm not sure the details on that part yet, but I think that was the intention, was we would share and, and kind of amplify, amplify the messages from regional district.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Counselor Karen's. Okay, we do have a couple of items in camera this evening, but before we do that, I know it's only been two weeks since the counselor, counselor assignments. Has anybody had any meetings in the last couple of weeks you want to report on? Counselor Karen's, go ahead.
Sure, I can report on the Kimberly Nature Park Society. And so the Nature Park Society now has a, a date for presenting their application for a longstanding grant. And so January the 13th, I believe it is, and President John Henley won't actually be back in the country at that point. So, but there will be other representatives from the board and and a short video presentation. So, and then their operations manager, Anna, I'm just trying to think of her last name, is, has started. And there is, let's see, Anna Malvin, and they've completed their strategic plan and the bylaw update. And that's all for today.
All right, cool. Thank you. Okay, mover to, sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. I was, I was just gonna say, I had my last meeting with the Center 64 Society. They are deep in budget discussions right now, and it's interesting. They got a ways to go.
Budgets always are.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Okay, mover to go in camera. Counselor Fox, thank you. Counselor McGuire, seconds. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, two minutes. Thanks for being here, Jared.
Did you guys, did you meet me when you came in the room? Jared, Jared, sorry.